Adding a new topic while you're unsubscribed, that means the app is in the background for over ten seconds or so. Um, we should, when you go back and see the topic and everything, so we, we need to do a lot of testing around as I mentioned yesterday, topics. So make sure it's all working deep links, topics, you know, creating topics, so. And so on and paginating through topics after creating them, all that good stuff. Um, those are kind of the major stuff, now there's. Minor stuff like, um. Well, the reactions are live, um, the, let's see here. The edit events should have gotten fixed now, uh, there's a backend problem there. The model for adding a friend, when you add a, when you add a single person to chat that you're not following, you should get a model to basically follow them. And if you click follow, you should follow them. If there's one of the one person, it should navigate you back to chat without the model showing. And if you add a person that you already following, we should also navigate you to chat without. You're in our model. So yeah, tho- those are things I've worked out, at least, I, I don't, I, I mean, uh, Wells have more.
Um, with the topics, um, like paginations, we should be checking all, if like after twenty-five topics.
Yeah, when a page, you'll, you'll notice when a page, you'll see a little bit of a. Like here's the end and then you can see more pop up. Um, and I'm just like, I want, pageant would work fine, I just wanna make sure it works after you. You know, the new logic where you put that for the backgrounds, it'll create a new topic, then you go back, you should see that new topic. I would recommend ten to fifteen seconds at least of background time, so for it to unsubscribe. And then pageinate, see if that works properly. So like a lot of edge cases we have here that we need to test.
Um, the manage members button. Is that supposed to be there for everyone?
Manage members. Um, I worked on that one, um. Yeah, we just have it there for, um, I wanted to blow that box, slip out my mind. We're just having it there for a yacht to work on his review.
So you need to remove it from production.
We can, like, we, we can, like, do in a condition there where it's gonna be only on QA.
Um, okay, maybe that'd be better.
Yeah, also one more thing, that you can now remove external users from the front end. Add a room, so that also needs testing.
Let's, let's take a look at a few things, I wanna share my screen. So. This managed group would only be, should only be available if you created a group, right?
I mean, right now, we're just there, but we can have it behind any, um, flag we want. I mean, based on what's available from the backend.
Okay, um, when I go to members, this phone, I have not allowed contacts, so when I go to members. I'm still supposed to see a list of people, right, like in the app, or people I'm following below. They're not showing up here.
Let me see what's, what's going on on the screen.
So let's say I wanna add somebody that I'm not following. Cause I wanna test the thing. Did this come from, uh, ChatGPT, Shontel?
A blend of it and then some stuff with me.
Okay. I wanna reword this, I, I, I want the header on one line.
Okay.
And then. It smell, you can make it so it doesn't line break after the word other, right, cause like we have yet. What's I call it when it works?
Uh, it's doing that, I have a line break before yet, after yet, but because the point is not wide enough. And the figure design, I guess that's one was really wide.
Right, well, then maybe we just make it after the word following, you know?
Yeah, I can do it after the word following.
Well, I'll just, I'll, I'll write it up and, um. Cause I'm probably changing the words a little bit.
John, the reason why you're not seeing anything there, because, uh, the contacts permission is disabled. And I believe that's why, we have some condition based on that.
Yeah, but we always had a list, cause like I'm following people and. There was a list here before, I, I never allow contacts on this phone.
Okay, uh.
Uh, Ismail, did you see when I just followed, I mean, and I added him to the group? It was really not, not super clear that I followed him, um. Was the button supposed to turn blue, like to following?
Hmm, you were talking about the model button?
Actually, yes, actually, more to think about it. Um, it shouldn't navigate you. It should be like, you should be able to say done, so like. Okay, if I go to, um, a profile. Okay, so if I go to a profile and follow somebody, I hit the follow button here and it turned blue. Then I know I'm following them, I think it should turn to following, now, just after I've used it, then I can see that it's kinda weird. And then, and then me, and then I should be able to say done, and I should be able to unfollow, you know, like, it could, it should toggle.
Okay, that wasn't part of the original design, but I, we can have that.
Yeah, and I didn't really think about it till actually using it in practice, so now. The feel of it was, cause it was weird, so I would say like, let's make it not navigate. Until you close it, so you just close the model.
Okay.
Okay, cool, will you make a note of that?
Sorry, there's, um, and I think there's X talked about, but I think I still didn't implement that, and that one, I don't know.
Yeah, it needs an X, cause I have to go close this.
Like, the X would be on the top right of the screen or on the top right of the model?
Um, actually, that's a good idea, we could put a red X right here.
Red X?
Yeah, cause that'll be very clear. And we use it already in other places. You know the one I'm talking about in a circle?
Yeah, yeah, we use it in, when you open a picture.
Yeah, okay.
And John, I looked up the code and it's, it was there like for over three months, if you're not allowing contacts. Uh, you're not gonna see that, you're only gonna see the members. Uh, and like, I went through that file, like the history changes for this week. And it was like no significant change that would affect the list that's going on there. The last change that was like that, it was like three months ago. Um, so we. Yeah, I'm looking through the code and there's like a condition there where it's like. When the permission is not, maybe, when it's, the permission is not enabled, then we don't show the contacts that we get in from the gray.
Wha- wh- when did this line come here, like, some of those doesn't make sense. Because, hold on, let me look on my production. Yeah, there's no line. There in production. Maybe if I went to the bottom, that would take me a while, but.
Uh, so on my version, um, it has a different line with the button show more.
Yeah.
Here, but I'm assuming if you didn't allow contacts, you wouldn't show your contacts on there. So I think that.
Yeah, but we were. Thought we were showing people I'm following and. Um, there was a long list of people.
You, you're using that with the other screens, and it's just OT, um, tagging, cause like we do that for those screens, not this one. And yeah, um, we can apply the same now here in the screen.
Well, let me think about it, is this, this search does search everybody in the app, right, so I could search.
Yeah.
So it's not like they're not there.
No, just like, um, the queen, so it should be like a list below the members. That list would not be, would not be called, because you don't allow permission contacts, that's how we, we have in the code for this screen.
I see. I'm thinking. So go, go ahead, Shontel, what's going on with you, with Bill thirty-one?
Um, basically just that I had, I was in the lobby. I opened an unread message. I navigated back to the library, I think I even went and, uh, opened another unread message. I went back to the lobby and I saw a new unread message from the production version of the Never Bored Club. Um, I, I.
Do you mean a notification?
No, I mean, it was my lobby.
So there's a message in your lobby here from Never Bored Club?
Yeah, like the actual one, not the fake one, like it has the.
How, how does that happen, you guys?
That would be, uh, mixed up with the subscription, I saw it last night too, that the, uh. The, because the user keys were the same, there is no difference subscription group between QA and production.
Okay, so, nothing to be alarmed about, but it's live in production if she were to message in it?
Um, well, no, if she tried to click it, it, cause I had that happen last night, I tried to click it and then it like. Didn't let me enter the group, because it was trying to enter a production group, and I was in a QA version of the app. This is always, only something that would happen to us, because we are, uh, you know, we are in both environments.
Okay. So nothing to be alarmed about?
Okay, cool, I just wanted to. Make sure that wasn't a problem, and then there was something else, oh, yeah, um, who should I send like little? Design issues to, like words being cut off, just little things like that.
Um, Wells can help with that.
Okay, I'll start sending some of those things to him.
Perfect. Okay, so. Or maybe it's, okay, if we don't show the list here. People I'm following, I guess it's. All right, um.
Sorry, one last thing, I just wanted to check on, cause this just happened since I downloaded thirty-one. I, uh, got a text message that said glad you're back, Shontel, but your circles app is stuck in the past. Update now and jump into the fun.
Yeah, that, that was that text message I disabled, I, I disabled it in production, but I disabled it in QA.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
Cool, wi- will that one work, Jerry, for the, in a proper case?
I, I'm still investigating why that's coming. Because I'm trying to get the version information, like your previous app version from One Signal. One Signal is returning me in some cases, uh, just a, an integer for a version. And I have to create like a lookup table for that integer version, when they don't return the proper app version. So like for Shontel, they, they were returning like five twenty as her app ver- as her app version. And not like two dot, two dot thirty, if that makes sense, so it was having trouble translating it. And it was just inferring that she was on a, um, old version by default.
Just poking around a bit, um, so. This one should pageinate now, cause that's twenty-five, let me add another one. I noticed that the other day too, there's like a little bit of a delay, did you see that, Ismail? Um.
What was that?
It's a bit of a delay, like after you add something, um, so, I'm gonna add a movie. I'm gonna send it, okay, so after I hit the send button, I'm gonna hit the send button now.
Yeah, it's creating the profile, I think that production's a little faster.
I don't recall it being. Invisible that long, is there an optimistic response that we could implement?
Hmm. I'll have to see what's going on. Maybe.
It's not, well, I mean, the thing is, it's a little bit confusing, cause especially with your first time, you're like. Did it work, like what happened?
Yeah, I can take a look at it.
Okay, it'd be nice if it was more consistent.
A quick question, why does it show eleven thousand people in that chat?
It's a test group.
Do we actually have that many people in the dev server in that chat?
Get notified.
But we get notified with duplicates because we're, um, in multiple chats on dev and live.
Well, in dev, what I did on purpose is, is for those users that are not internal, I cleared out their player IDs.
Ah, okay, cool, smart, okay, thank you.
So no one is getting those notifications, right? You're sure about that?
Yes.
Yeah, that, it makes sense, that if, that, that if there's no player ID, there shouldn't be any possibility of it.
I just wanted to clarify, when I click the three dots from an activity feed card. And I try to share, those options are still not available, right? The sharing circles, more share options or report.
One, one sec, I'm sorry. Ismail, this time it did nothing.
Hmm, you just created a topic, right?
Yeah, I wrote the word test and tested the little animation where.
Oh, where they're deploying something, the whole backend is down.
Oh. The backend's down?
Well, they're deploying something right now, I'm getting five or twos everywhere.
Jerry, are you deploying something? Jerry? Maybe we lost Jerry?
Uh, get, you know, he's just having a har- hard time finding the mute button, uh, let's see. Yeah, deploying, yeah, I had something deploying, let me see, yeah, I just deployed something to QA, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let me know when it's deployed. Um, so, Ismail, this, um, these topics, they do pageinate now? Um.
Yes.
So they looked, looked normal, what would I be looking for in terms of?
All the way to the end.
Yeah, did that, it paginated the first time.
Yeah, that means you, that means you're, you have all your topics loaded.
Oh, right.
John, change the topic, if you can change the topic, everything should be fine.
What do you mean by change your topic?
I was gonna say, if you could switch between the topics, yeah, see how everything loaded in, now after a reset, yeah, everything's fine.
There, see, these loaded fine, Ismail, so is that. But there, you, these have been, you've been paginating these for a couple builds, what, what else was new with topics?
So if you remember that bug where if you're in the background, somebody creates a new topic, it wouldn't show.
That's right.
So I fixed that, but, but because I, but that fixing that required me to do some changes.
Yeah.
Around that screen, so I wanna make sure nothing else broke, really. It's not more like, you know, something new with pagination, so make sure pagination is still working as expected.
Okay.
And, you know, other things like deep linking and so on. Um, I mean, I sent you that PR, I know you've reviewed it, I just wanna make sure you kind of. Take an extra close look to it, maybe, um, just because it has to do with the. Uh, in chat, tap down, then you know that screen can get a little crazy. With any small change can affect.
Yeah, so it was like a one, uh, one fine change. And I, uh, yeah, I was looking if you introduce any new states, because that would miss some things there. Which is, that's a good thing, and, um, the only thing, it's like, yeah, the un- uncompleted. You see the F, there's like, um, you added a, an F condition inside an uncompleted, where it's, um. Where it's like each, it switches the, the selected tab. That's the only one that I can.
Hmm, are you talking about? The connect model or the?
No, no, they, uh, PR sent me and I reviewed.
Okay, uh, you said F condition in the on comply, oh, yeah, yeah, see, oh, yeah, yeah, see, I see that, it's conditioned, um. So that one, yeah, yeah, that one is, so, that one's a little tricky there, because. So the reason for that is, imagine when you go back to your, you, you put the app in the background, right? Then you come back and just say you had a topic selected. Um, so when you go back, you obviously wanna go back to the topic that you had selected.
It should be, yeah, like, what, if you, like for example, you select some topic, put in the app in background and. Bring the app foreground.
Yeah, but now we, we, we do a refresh, because, so, the initial problem was.
All right.
Yeah, the, the, the initial problem was, let's say you put the app in the background for like ten seconds, you know how you unsubscribe?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So let's say somebody creates a new topic, then you go back in, you won't find that new topic. You'll see it in chat, but you won't see it in the topics above, cause you're un- un- unsubscribed, so it never updated the cache.
Yeah, yeah.
So now, I, what I do is if these goes, and the background comes back, I refetch that data.
Okay, uh, and the way how, okay, the selected topic, where's the selected topic, thank you.
Yeah, so let's say, you know, let, let, let's say you're, you're in topic five, for example, right? So you put the app in the background, you come back, we do a refetch, now the refetch is gonna trigger that on complete, right?
You're gonna add another one, yeah, I, I get all of that, I just like making sure you're going back to the same topic. Cause like I seen, yeah, you're, uh, using the selected topic. That selected topic is a state, right?
Uh, correct, but if that state is lost, that means that whole screen is gonna end up refreshing.
Yeah.
And then you're gonna have, you're gonna end up in the main chat, right?
Yeah, yeah, uh, for me, it looks good, that was the only thing that I like, I.
Was a little iffy about, right?
Yeah, that I still, like, I was like, you know, trying to understand what's going on there. But since that selected topic to me was a state and was saved, I don't see any other, uh, reason where it's gonna be lost. I don't, goes in the app or switching screen.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I mean, when I, when I added there, I had the same thought, like a little skeptical, but like, I didn't find, I didn't find a better.
Well, what, what you can do instead of like, to be really sure, instead of having there inside the uncompleted there. All the act of the refresh.
Hmm.
So.
But you, but the thing is. Hmm, if I have it right after the refresh, it can trigger before the refresh is done, and if the new topic is added, it could be.
You're gonna wait until the refresh is done.
Oh, okay, okay.
Because the refresh also has undone and uncompleted callbacks.
Hmm, but would it trigger, so if I add it on complete to refresh, would it trigger the one on top or not?
No, the one on top will not be triggered.
Okay, well, then I might add it there, I might add it on the complete on the, on the, on the refresh then, because.
Yeah.
I don't want the code for the on complete to trigger to begin with, that's why I have that return statement there.
Yeah, yeah, I see, that would be much safer, like having it there.
Okay, let me see, let me, let me make that tweak then.
Okay. I forgot what that was regarding.
My message?
No, I thought they were just talking about, um, but yeah, what, what's your hand up for?
Oh, yeah, um, basically with what we were just testing just now. Um, I'm saving my video of my screen recording of what just happened. But I went to, uh, create a custom topic, uh, Shontel CT custom topic. And I ended up with a. Empty chat and it still had the app, uh, logo at the top. And it wasn't fully creating, I waited for a while, I didn't know how long I should wait before assuming that it's not working. Or versus it just being a delayed wait. Um, but I waited for like a minute, a full minute, and it didn't come through. And then I looked and next to it at the top was the custom topic created with your message. But I had to scroll, uh, well, it was right next to it, but yeah, I was able to go to that. And it was like, do you wanna leave without sending, and I said leave, and then it disappeared. And I was able to go to the custom topic right there that you're, or, well, that is at the top right there, that, and.
Okay, and you're referring to this topic, was the one trying to go to?
Yeah, that last one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, let's take a look at that in a sec, can you react to one of these messages here?
Yeah.
Cool, now do one in the main chat. Okay, wonder why I'm not getting notifications? Jerry, can you look at why my John test phone is not getting notifications?
All right, in QA?
Yeah. I did have them off, but I deleted the app and reinstalled and had them on, and put them on, so this should be on. Shontel, you wanna share your screen record with us?
Yeah, I'll, I'll put it, I was cutting it up, so that you didn't have to see all the stuff that was going on before. Cause it was screen recording for a while. I'm just trying to shorten it and save it, and then I'll put it in dev.
Okay, um, Ismail, um, we did create a custom topic and it did appear. While I was in the chat, except, is this supposed to be the end of the list, is that the best we can do?
Hmm, it's just some topic as a, um, no, it should be at the beginning of the list.
I was in.
If you created it, it'll be at the end of the list.
No, I was in a chat.
As the receiver, it'll be at the beginning of the list.
Okay, it wasn't, it was at the end as the receiver.
It was the end, hmm, who created the topic?
Shontel.
And it was that event?
No, custom topic.
Where is it, I don't see it.
It's this one on the bottom, it's in the front now, but that's, cause I navigated and came back. But it was at the end when she made it.
Oh, so to the end and he came back, uh, if that's the case, I forget which one it was, but if it is like that, I remember we did that for, for a reason. Um, we're having some crazy cash problems. I remember, um, that, cause the receiver, it was at the beginning, I couldn't forget. Hmm, I mean, I could, I can't remember, um, I know for, as a sender for sure goes to the, to the end, and we kinda needed it that way. Cause of pagination and stuff.
Hmm.
Hmm, as a receiver though. Yeah, so there's a lot of logic done there. Yeah, I forgot, so there's a lot of logic done there.
Okay.
I forgot if that was intentional.
Let's, so would, uh, everything share, like if she shares a movie, would Chantel, you share a movie with me?
Yep.
Well, can I actually go in the background and, and then have her share, so you could test if it refetches properly?
Well, I wanted to see if it would show up like in.
Oh, okay.
Cause that's what you worked on for this build, right?
No. I worked on it showing if you have that in the background. Remember how you reported that bug?
How can it show if you have the app in the background, I mean, I wouldn't see.
When you go back to the app and reopen it, it should be there.
Okay.
Remember how you reported a bug to me, you said, hey, this person shared the topic with me, I see it in the chat, but I don't see it in the topics above.
That's right.
Yeah, that's a problem I fixed.
That's right, and it did show up, it was just at the end of this.
It wasn't in the list, correct, cause it, the, the, the subscription was not, was, well, you were unsubscribed, so the cache never updated.
Okay.
Oh, that was unexpected.
Now what?
Where the share showed up? It showed up in the middle, I mean, towards, definitely towards, okay, definitely not the middle. But not the last one either, there's like three other topics at the end.
You're saying like the middle, like kinda like this?
Uh, over just a little bit?
Okay.
Like where the, oh, no, 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 sorry, I'm looking at the top part of your screen, not in the main chat. Yeah, so it was the fourth one from the end, I'll show you in dev, that was just unexpected.
Okay, so after you created the topic.
Are you saying you have topics after the, when you create it?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's funny, that was a pagination, I showed that, that was kind of a side effect, remember John, I showed you that?
Yeah.
Because what happens is you create a new topic and then adds it to cache, but what, what does it also do, it takes it to the end of the list. And so if you have other stuff, it's gonna continue paging them. Cause the, hmm, condition was met for pagination, which is being at the end of the list.
Okay, so I just uploaded both of those videos and dev.
Okay. Should I watch the two minute one or the twenty second one?
Uh, they're two separate things, the two minute one, just, the, the end is just gonna be like you. Probably only need a minute into it and like this part, I guess I could have skipped, but I really just wanted to show like where I was. At the beginning of how I got here.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's not like you can share custom topic any other way.
And then you were saying after you hit send, there was a problem?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this is where I got stuck for a minute.
And Jerry, you were not deploying during this, right? Cause this was just like a minute, well, twelve fifty-eight, this was.
Twelve, oh, fifty-eight, um.
Nine.
My last deploy was, uh, twenty or fifteen minutes ago.
Okay.
And this is ten minutes ago.
Yeah, um, John, I also wanted to say, I think you're screen sharing and that's why you're not getting notifications, cause one signal says everything's coming through.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense, thank you. Um, oh, then the, then it popped in.
Yeah.
Wait. Oh, that's very interesting, okay, so what, it's not like it's frozen here, so.
Well, keep, keep watching.
Yeah, it's milk, you see here. Um, the custom topics you made, if you watch at the top, top of the screen.
Top of the screen, okay.
Watching top of the screen, keep watching, I'm just letting it play. Keep watching there.
Okay.
Um, and that was after she hit send, let's go back to when she hit send, so.
So you're composing something here?
Yeah, custom topic.
Okay. And then she hits send.
Oh, yeah, yours says that.
This is you or Chantel?
This is Chantel.
So you hit send and then, and then, and then nothing happens?
For a while.
Wait.
Hmm. Would it be a backend delay, cause we, we do need the backend to create the topic and return it?
Well, we didn't get to the very end yet, so I just wanna show you that part too.
Hmm.
So.
Hmm.
It comes in.
Okay.
But not really, cause they didn't get rid of the old one.
Right.
That's where I trust. Made a new one.
Yeah.
Well, supposed to make a new one, but it's supposed to remove the old one from cache.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I didn't even recognize that it had popped up, I was still just waiting for it to show up. So we could actually probably fast forward a little bit, but I had to actively go and click. Custom topic to even see my message, and he had already responded. See, I tried clicking the other one and I got that pop up, and if you notice, it's also really dark too.
Yeah, yeah, no, I see, uh, weird. Never saw that happen before.
Uh, how it's not at the very end either.
Does it happen consistently or is this like?
Yeah, can you, can you recreate that, Chantel?
I will.
Create another custom phone.
Oh, I will do that, I will create another one. And then I have another video after that.
Okay, I'll take a look at that in a sec, why is there so much space here?
That's also a new thing that I was gonna bring up as far as like design stuff, is the input bar is a lot higher, it's not typically like this. And also when, uh, I'm editing a message, it is much higher.
That just in this new build?
Yes.
I mean, did you work on that or Wells? Do you guys know why this might be sitting up so high like this?
Um, I didn't work on that lately. Uh, don't you think, uh, it's mail, it might has anything to do with the work you did for, uh. When you're trying to replay?
When I'm trying to up?
Uh, when you try to, uh, edit, sorry, like when you whole.
Uh, well, no, that's a whole different screen.
Okay. Um, not really sure, um, where it does should be coming from, it's like we didn't touch that, we, we, like. I, I don't remember like working on it.
Didn't we, didn't we, it wasn't there a change made, because remember how it was covering some of the keyboard? I don't know who worked on it, but I remember Android was covering some of the keyboard.
That's right.
I think some changes were made, no, or was that never addressed or?
Can't remember who, no, somebody worked on that.
Yeah, I just, I just, I don't remember I worked on that for the past week or.
Yeah, definitely not just like build thirty-one, like that was a while ago, I think it might be something to do with the edit, um, it's mail because. Um.
Well, edit is a different screen, like it has nothing to do with this, has nothing to do with what you're working on right now.
But you, um. You had to move this, I think?
Hmm, yeah, yeah, that, that's what I'm saying, this is a whole different screen you're looking at right now, a whole different text, like this is not the same text input.
Yeah, even like you see like this, what, what's, it's meant to say, like even, you see in this one, it's overlaying the chat.
Mm-hmm.
I like the code wise, they're like separate, like each has its own styles and everything, I miss mail.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Well, I mean.
Okay, I just noticed something on that when you get a chance.
Okay, one sec, I mean, will you take a quick look at this, Android specific?
Okay, it's, it's like, just go to our chat, focus on input and just like that.
Yeah, yeah, is it all, it's always like this now, Chantel, when you turn type in the chat?
Yes, yeah, just in this version.
Okay, Todd, are you, are you there? You, you have your Android buildup? On here? Alright, well, when Todd comes back, I wanna see if it's doing it for him too. Um, and what else did you say, Chantel, you said you noticed something else?
Yeah, you were presenting, um, and then you saw my custom topic, test, test. I still, it's not showing up at all for me, it looks like I haven't even sent it.
The purple one here?
Yeah.
Okay, so on your end, you don't see that?
Yeah, I hit the back button to take me to the lobby and I came back and then it showed up.
Okay.
But it, I was waiting for a while and it didn't even show up on the side like we previously saw.
Okay. Okay, so maybe we got some Android issues here, I smell. We'll do one thing at a time, but, um. We'll get to that one too, take a note of that, Chantel, so it's the steps where you created this one.
Mm-hmm.
And then just didn't see it in here as a preview?
No, it, it never came up for me at all, it was just stuck.
Hmm, okay.
Of still having the logo at the top, but then having the blue screen like below the topics. Um, the, the other one, like how it showed in my last video where it came up, that never happened.
Hmm, okay.
So I have a screen recording of it.
Okay.
Just this past time as well.
Okay. Jerry?
Yeah?
Um, on this screen here, see I have Danny at the top?
Mm-hmm.
But then if I go to add another friend. I also have Danny five down.
And you're, and the next question is likely gonna be, can Danny not be there?
No, yeah, can we avoid the duplicates here?
Ooh.
Cause like, happens now, if I go like this.
Hmm, I think, I think the front end should have a check for that, um, well, it looks like it is, it's not adding them back. Or the front end should like keep that name checked, because.
At the very least, yeah.
I would, I would like to see if the front end could, could keep that, because the lists aren't exactly linked to each other perfectly.
Yeah, hey, Wells, you worked on the screen, are you looking at my screen?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, so if I hit add another friend, you see how Danny is at the top? And I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna add another friend, we should have Danny pre-selected here. Anybody that's currently in, um, currently in this list. Should be like already checkmarked here, right?
Makes sense.
Yeah, oh, like this one's for you though, Jerry, um, we should not have this.
Got it.
And then Wells, will you take care of like, of the first part of it?
Yeah, I'm having the, the, the users that are already on the list pre-selected, indeed.
Yeah, so yeah, if they're already here and I go here, I should check, I should see them checked.
Sounds good.
Cool, cool. So many little considerations, huh?
Indeed.
Yeah. It's mail, you're looking into, um, the thing Chantel just sent, right?
Um, I will not, right now I'm just working on that deep link for rewards screen.
Oh.
Yeah, I was gonna hit that done yesterday, but I ran out of time, so looking to that now for on it here, so asking me for it.
Okay, sounds good, um, while, while we're doing, and it means looking into something too, the keyboard thing, let me know when you're done with that, I mean. And in the meantime, um, Jerry, let's get your update.
Yeah, I know we got a lot going on today, um, spent some time with that chat admin, getting that ready to go. Um, I also got the custom tip, the custom tickets working for the, uh. What Zane just sent me, I got that.
That's awesome, um, I forgot about that, I wish I could, I can't test that here, can I? Cause there's no, none of those chats exist here.
Right, but, um, I, I can send them to development, like I, I can send those links to development or I can send them to you.
Okay.
I sent, actually, let me just copy this one. And, um, let me send it to you, I'll send it to your main phone, iMessage.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Uh, we got that going, uh, so it sounds like, uh, when I talked to y'all yesterday, that there is a, uh. You know, an approach y'all wanted on tracking the downloads that we get this afternoon, but, um. Looks like after kind of talking it through with Zane, the approach is now, any user that downloads the app. And that does not have an inviter, it does not have, you know, anyone that downloads the app and does not have an inviter. Will get added also to Good Vibes Club and Wealth Chat for at least this weekend.
Is that how we're doing it? Yeah, cause we couldn't get the tracking on that, I, I, I wasn't clear on that, like why we couldn't.
Zane was talking about, uh, skipping the landing page and going straight to the app.
That's right, I suggested that, because we don't really need them to hit the land, we don't, cause if they hit the landing page, the next step is they enter their phone number, right?
Correct.
That's unnecessary friction, did we, did we do that the last wealth post?
Uh, no, the last wealth post, we, I think we took everybody that, I think, we retroactively put people that onboarded that day in the group.
That's right, we didn't even, we weren't even prepared for that, that's right, okay, so this would be the first time and. Yeah, I don't, we definitely, okay, bottom line, we don't need them going to a landing page and enter phone number, that's totally unnecessary friction, but. I still don't get why, um. Like there's, we're losing some things in there, like why can't it do an app check and, and you take you, like open the app on your phone? If you have the app already, like it doesn't do that, number one.
Yeah, okay, well, what link are you sending, you're sending the App Store link?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's see, if you sent the deep link, if you sent the dynamic link, it, it'll do all the magic.
Yeah, why can't we, why can't we use that and get all the magic? And, and then skip the landing page, if, you know.
It skips.
I mean, we can have a landing page that's a redirect.
Okay, so I think what this comes down to whether or not is. Do you want the landing page where the user enters their phone number?
No.
And that's where things get fuzzy.
But can't we, um, we didn't, we didn't discuss this yesterday, but, um. Why can't we still do the landing page, but just instant redirect?
We will, so.
Have the app.
We will not know who comes in from that link, okay?
We don't need to.
Yeah, we might have an alternative here.
Yeah.
For that link and that link only.
Yeah.
What I could do is we can have it just redirect to the App Store. And now the logic that adds people to the groups, like the catchall would work.
Huh.
Yeah, because we won't, we wouldn't be creating an invite, they'd be coming through as a user without an invite.
That's good, yeah, we don't need that.
So maybe what we could do is we could do that, but what, what I'm telling you though is I am not gonna have a high level of confidence. I can track the views on the page, but I'm not gonna have a high level of confidence. When it comes to getting the numbers at the end of the day, other than saying, okay, here's how many users came into the app. And did not have an invite, inviter.
Yeah, I, I knew that, I know that because, um. Well, actually.
When we have the landing page, I can give, I can give pretty confident answers.
Well, yeah, cause they're, they're en- entering their phone number, right? Yeah, and we. Yeah, and we knew that, but we know also like pretty much most people are gonna come from there anyway, so. Um, we're okay with that, but the other features of it, the other frictionless navigation is more important. So let let's do that, we have time, we have an hour or two. Let's get it going.
Yep, uh. What's up?
I'll let Zane know.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna switch it back to the dynamic lane. So dynamic link for the Good Vibes Vibes Club, by the way, did you get the iMessage?
Um, okay, so yeah, the message you text me here.
Yeah.
Yeah. I tap on it. Cool, cool, yeah, navigating me to the group, now I'm already a member of this group.
Yeah, but it would have, you you would look the same whether or not you were a member or not. If you were.
Uh, I I cannot produce the issue with the Chantel having on the keyboard. Yeah, maybe I'm just on my emulator.
And also, there are so many different types of Androids and different keyboards on Androids.
Yeah, so.
I saw Todd jump back in. Todd, are you back?
Also like on the video, uh, Shanta shared, it was like some white spacing even before. It was like something white there in the video, I don't know what's that.
Once again. White space where?
Like below the input.
Below the input.
Like if you go to, um, like time stop twenty seconds. Somewhere there.
Okay, so here's the input. So go back.
Yeah, go back. There, no, okay, yeah, let's play it here.
It's a different one, maybe?
Hmm, maybe. Yeah, no, it's the same video, it's just for some reason for you, aid from the beginning. Yeah, here, see?
Yeah, yeah, I noticed this too, it's just, it's up above her keyboard, like all the time.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, we got a few issues here, huh? This whole thing is kind of janky, like.
Yeah.
Like even just like. Let's start at the beginning, I noticed like ten. Like, okay, hold on. I thought here. Wait a second, okay, I see transparency at the very top. That's two seconds in. But now I I am three seconds in. And it's fully white. Why? It's weird. See that, see the line here, like the?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I can see it.
How can that happen? That doesn't do that on iPhone. Let me double check it, but I think it stays transparent on the iPhone. Okay, so that was, that's just one. Yes, it's got transparency on the iPhone. Like more of a greeting. Okay, so that was one thing, then. That's just the whole transition right there, like this just shifted up. Right there, see? That's kind of janky, it's probably the little nav bar at the bottom, right?
Yeah, it should be the nav bar, yeah, if it's like was invisible, then visible, it shifts everything, you know, one of it.
Then you see, oh yeah, you see, that's what it looks janky, you see the conversation for a frame, then. This just boom, no fade, no nothing, so. So you press the button here or. Actually, what did she hit, X? She hit the custom topic button. Okay, so you hit custom topic button, the loty disappears, but like it doesn't fade out, it's fair, it just disappears. Then you see the chat, then you instantly see this, then it pops up, uh, so. Yeah. It's pretty janky.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure if you have an Android, but you should be trying Android, cause I'm trying to do it as well on Android. Like, um, the jankiness of the transition. I have these, um, for me, it does not like jump, I just not like jump to the top, let it be a shift.
On Android, yeah, on your Android?
Yeah.
The reason why is that nav bar on the bottom, first of all, isn't on all Androids, and even when it is on Androids. Um, sometimes it goes up, sometimes it doesn't, I don't know what triggers it, cause I have my test Android and. I would, I never had, I never really figured out like what, when it decides to put it there. So that's why it's not jumping for you.
Like, uh, I'm not sure.
Yeah, iPhone is super smooth. Like all the transitions, like I hit custom topic. Actually, there is, there still is an in-between where the loty disappears.
Yeah, that happens too, yeah.
But it's so fast and the transition to the sliding. I think really mainly because the next screen slides in, it's like, it's totally imperceptible.
Yeah, for me, like I don't have the this top bar here because we we are hiding it ourselves and when we go like custom topic. If it appears smoothly, like it's not, maybe because of, uh, uh, yeah, maybe the device. Dimension, maybe this one, oh, that's why, was like no need for that shift.
It's not the worst thing, I mean, it's pretty quick in real time. I don't know, it is pretty janky. The shift up is not ideal. So it doesn't do it on yours, you're saying?
Yeah, and maybe because of device that dimension.
Maybe. You do have that nav bar, is that nav bar always there?
In this screen, yeah, it's always in here.
Is it there on every screen?
Uh, it's, yeah, just, it's in here, but like in here now. And you can see the shift when it's like here.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'm I'm a little more worried about that keyboard, um, well, not the keyboard, but the input field being so high above the keyboard.
Like, um, I don't have to produce it, like, I mean. I was in go between topics, input like this, but. Maybe it's specific to a type of Android or a keyboard.
I wish we didn't have to deal with Android.
Yeah.
But it's new in build thirty-one, so definitely got introduced. What do you think, I mean, where do you think it came from?
Uh, my first, uh, thing that I was suspecting is like the changes we did here. Not this one, no, I have to watch it just, like, yeah, when you edit. Like the changes we did here and also, also like the spacing here, maybe. Yeah, maybe somehow it's leading into the other screen, which I don't, I don't see.
Yeah, could you try investigating or do you think Ismail should investigate that? It seems like there's a relationship because I bet if you take out the code here, it stops doing it.
Well, the thing is, it cannot produce it this way, so.
Producing it with the edit though, try it, try removing the edit code and see if it fixes it.
But this?
Yeah.
Wasn't this added intentionally this spacing?
No, not like that. That's, that's.
Okay, it's, maybe it's related to this, so Ismael, you know. How, what were you did to have this space in here?
Let me, let me look at my other screen, cause my phone is actually on the screen, share. Did I, okay, um. Oh, the spacing there, that's using the the avoid keyboard from that library you told me about.
Yeah, but like, so you didn't.
Yeah, so I guess I, it's because of the way it works, um, I have it related to screen size. Um, and I have it a little bit up because, um, first of all, devices will be touching it, for bigger devices, it might be a little bit up like this.
Can you like, like have it to touch it, just add a bad intent or something? So hmm, maybe that's why, because you based down the height.
But are you guys trying to say, like this one, I know why this is happening. Um, I probably need to come up with a math formula that probably gets it closer to the edge, depending on the screen height. Cause the thing is that avoid keyboard, um, component for, it it's it's not consistent with all. Well, at least on Android with with all device sizes, like that margin has to be. Different from device to device, you know what I mean?
I would bet that it's leading to Chantel's issue.
Hmm, like I said, it's, they're totally like.
We could test.
The one you're looking at is a different component, different code, different everything.
Yeah, but we could test it easily by removing the code and then put it, give it her an APK and seeing if it works.
We can't stay on APK zone.
Why not?
I mean, because of the app check and like, um, the app needs to be installed from, uh. From the Play Store, like that's what they're doing, like, they're trying to be like the same as iOS.
Okay.
I can almost guarantee it's not related, like it's just two separate codes, uh.
It's too much of a coincidence, though.
Do you think they're related, I mean, like, do you see a connection?
If they are two different, different codes, no, I don't see how it's related, but sometimes things happen. Leads, you know, remember how there was this issue, it was related to the keyboard? It was like on some screen where I don't remember, like it was like here. Okay, is here, what's going on? This is weird, like, this is. Cannot press on this, but like it was, um.
I think I know what you're talking about, but I think that one had like a shared state between them, right?
No, 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 it it did not. What's going on here? It was like he and the people, if you search, like, so it was like some overlay here. And that overlay was being, uh, taken to the other screen as well, not the overlay, but it was because because we're calling, uh.
I remember, because like a certain library called, yeah.
Yeah, and and it was like bleeding to another screen that has nothing to do with it. And only after like you call in that hook, just like that, you're calling in another screen and it fixed it. So it was related to the keyboard.
So this will happen only after edit or but like, cause what if we, like, what if she doesn't click edit, would it not happen?
No, it was, it was from the start and every time on her input field.
Cause like right now, I'm I'm looking at my Android, looks perfectly fine. And Todd, is your Android doing the same thing or is he not back?
I think he's back, Todd, are you there?
Todd, I mean, I I can even try to edit.
Has, um, do you see my screen, Ismael?
Hmm, yeah.
This is the issue that I was talking about, and it was like, the issue happening, like the hook was happening in the chicken screens. Like because we're calling this, this, um, hook.
Yeah.
We were calling this hook in those, in these screens. And it was affecting, even like this is the chicken screen, it was affecting the search, like the new share.
But what was the hook called?
It was like related to the keyboard.
But I think it was, it was because we were using a V, uh, V and reanimated, right?
Yeah, and so like it's the keyboard, so maybe. The keyboard, like all those libraries under the hood, maybe they have some global settings for the keyboard, like. When you, which I doubt, but I don't know, things are with with. And it was only, again, this issue was only Android.
Yeah. I don't know, because I wanna see if other people are experiencing the same thing, cause I'm not experiencing it on my phone, I wanna see if Todd is on his phone. But I see what you're saying. And if that is the case, then yeah. Yeah, I mean, I see, I see what you're saying, we can, I guess we could try to remove it in the next little for testing purposes. And Chantel, if you can uninstall the app, reinstall it, see if it still does the same thing, that'll also be useful.
Todd, are you there? We have a question about the Android, can you hear me? I'm texting with him. Oh boy, okay, he's in the bathroom now, well, we'll ask him when he gets back. Okay, so. I I have another way to test though, which is we simply remove the code, give it a build to Chantel, see if it fixes it. Right, when that tells? Ismail.
Uh, sorry, just lost me there for a second.
Isn't the, and another Porsche test is remove the code, get Chantel a build, see if it fixes it.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was saying, um. I suck into her and build, um. Um, yeah, I think we have to do a build, I guess, regular build.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate that this is like probably only some Androids. It's definitely, it's not even any iOS phone like iPhones. Um, we're wasting time with the whole team here talking about this one thing, but nevertheless, it's. A defect.
Yeah.
It's not ideal.
And this has never happened before, right, Chantel, before the spells?
That's correct.
Hmm, okay. Okay, let's see, um. Yeah, Android is annoying, especially with keyboards, like keyboard and React Native is annoying in general, but Android and React Native with the keyboard, it's just. Because like iOS worked great without even me having to use that library. There was like a model built in, something built in in the model, which worked perfectly fine. Of course, Android decided not to cooperate with. That model, so I'll see, I'll, I'll, I'll see if I can achieve it in another way. If not, then I'll try to remove the code and see if that's what's affecting it, because, you know, theoretically, they shouldn't have anything to do with each other, but. I know we've ran into this once, I mean, remind me now, where we did something related to React Native and Keyboard. Or not React Native, Reanimated and Keyboard, and it ended up fixing the whole app, even though, again, it shouldn't.
Okay, um, so are we gonna do the build?
Well, I'm gonna try to see if I can get the same results in a different approach.
Okay.
And that way.
Well, first you have to recreate it, right?
Recreate what now?
The keyboard issue, the input field issue on the keyboard?
Well, yeah, what I'm saying is I want to, well, I can't recreate it on my device.
Right, so why not just remove the code and send her a build?
I can do that, but what, but instead of just sending her a build, I want to try to maybe do the same thing, fix the problem. Because like right now, if I remove the code, it's not going to be working, the the input is going to be hidden.
Yeah.
So I want to see if I can get edit to work without using that library.
Okay, well, okay, that's fair. So keep that in mind, then we'll do that, but first priority is still the custom topics. Um, you, well, and you were also doing something with a deep link. Did you finish that?
Yeah, I just finished that right now.
Okay, do you need Jerry to test something?
Um, I think Alman is working on that. I sent him the deep link.
Okay, Alman, will you, Alman, will you test for us, please?
So for this, he he's gonna add that deep into notification, but it's only gonna work on the front and after with the new build.
Okay.
I, John, I have some questions regarding notification. Can I ask you, uh, like, uh?
Yeah, hold on one sec, and I'll come right back to you. So Ismail, then, next priority is the whatever's going on with these custom topics that Chantel shared into.
Um, yeah, were you able to recreate them, Chantel? Is it like something easy to recreate on Android?
So I kind of sort of got to recreate it. My only issue is, is the other time when I tried to recreate it. I never had the other topic show up next to it. I had to, um, go back to my lobby and then when I came back, it was there.
Hmm, uh, okay, so I guess my question is, is it easy to recreate on, like, is it something that happens every time or weirdly, or is there any?
Yeah, that custom topic problem that you shared to developments channel, if you do it again, does it do it exactly the same, same problem?
Yeah, as far as it not showing up, that part's consistent. Whether or not the topic shows as a separate topic on the side is the one variable that's not consistent.
Okay, and is that only on Android? Is iOS working fine?
I didn't have a problem on my iPhone.
And you created a top, right?
I created a couple different custom topics. I'll do another one just to be sure, but yeah.
I'm gonna try to create one on my Android right now.
When Todd comes back, we can have him try it as well.
Yeah.
Let's see, I'm gonna try again, custom top. Yeah, it it works okay on my iPhone. I haven't had a problem.
That's weird.
Hmm.
There's no problem to watch, yeah, um, what, uh. What group are you creating those custom topics in?
The big test one with eleven thousand people in it.
Is that the same group you tested, no?
I'm using it in the big one, yeah, with, well, no, this one has ten people. Let me try the bigger one. I'm pretty sure I did one in the big one, too.
Yeah, I just created it via Android and it worked perfectly fine on my one-on-one. Hmm, let me try to, let me try to create it on. If you go to the test.
It worked fine on the iPhone.
Okay, I saw that.
Pagination, um.
Yeah, so for me, it it worked fine on my one-on-one on the test group, though.
Yeah.
It did the same thing, so it looks like it, it's more related to the creating it in that specific group.
And and.
So.
Android specific.
What's going on there?
Um, I do see another issue. It didn't create the card. I wish, um, I can just share my screen. Well. Yeah, damn it, it fixed it. I'm gonna, I had a feeling that'd happen, but I took a screenshot. Um, let me share my screen.
Sorry, what was I sharing? I thought it's stealing.
It's okay, let me show you. So. Um. Oh, this is the one you made. Okay, so see this one you made here?
Yeah.
Okay, um. This is how it looked a second ago. I took a screenshot. Um, see at the very bottom. The very, very bottom, see the preview window at the very bottom?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's because of cash, yeah. We we were, that does that, it does that to all the topics when you first create them.
You sent this. I'm the receiver.
Oh, oh, it only does that for the sender.
Well, I'm the receiver. When I took the screenshot, which, you know, like basically changes the state. It it and I was closed the screenshot window, it popped in, navigate. This is, this is the app here live, you know, so this is what it looked like until I did the screenshot.
Okay. So in it populated after you went back to lobby or just by itself?
By itself, uh, this, you know how you do a screenshot, it's like navigating away? Changes state, right?
Because when you come back, it's gonna refetch everything, so.
Exactly, so it refest.
It's like going to lobby.
Exactly, but I tapped that screenshot because I thought it might do that, so that way you can see. Um. I'll go ahead and send this just so we have it in, uh. In development.
Yeah, that means that could be that, oh, I think I know what that is. Uh, so, but that comes through the subscription and the subscription has to mark it as view card. So if it's not viewing it. That means maybe you might have to work on the backend with this, that means that subscription may not be marking, marking it as. View card, which, but the query is, that's where any refetch you see it.
Mm hmm.
Um, so, yeah, I think that's what's going on there.
Okay, will you look in it? It looks, it seems like we got a new issues around these custom topics and page nations, so.
Hmm, well, it's weird because with the one-on-one, it works fine.
Did it?
Even with pagination, when creating this topic, but when creating it here.
The one-on-one chat did not have more than twenty-five topics, though, did it?
Mine did.
Did?
Yes.
Oh, and you're on Android?
I was in Android, correct?
Okay, hmm, but then you recreated it in group chat.
I, I was, I was able to create, you created in this chat, yeah, but not in my one-on-one, which also has pagination.
Okay, um, okay. Well. We gotta get these sorted out.
Yeah, I'll work on these, um, now, now that I know how to recreate that. Um, so that being said, I think it's Friday, I do have to drop now, but, um, before I do that, if I kind of want to go over what I'm going to be working on today.
Okay.
Um, so, well, the custom topic we just talked about right now, we're gonna need to work on that keyboard problem again. Inside edit to see if that's a problem or not. Um. Other than that, we have the what streaming model. Um, I still need the conditions for that when it's gonna pop up. So you can just Slack me that when you have those figured out, um.
We talked about that. It's just if you tap the message, the nav bar, um, message, so like. If here I am in the lobby and if I try and tap on that eleven down at the bottom, nothing happens, right?
No, I'm talking about the streaming.
Oh, what stream, yeah, right.
Oh, what's streaming?
Yeah.
Um, so I'm, I'm gonna assume just maybe the first time you open the chat, you'll see it.
Yeah.
On your local device.
That's it, just the first time you open it, yeah.
Okay, so I'll have that start on the local device again. If you uninstall, it's all happening again, but.
That's not.
Better than make any vehicle, um, and then the lobby model, I can just take care of that, too, the one you mentioned before.
Okay.
We had initially signed that tools, but I can just take care of the, with the other model, since I'm working on models.
Okay, the lobby one was.
If you click on the lobby while you're there.
Yeah, okay, I'll talk, I'll tell them that you're gonna handle it.
Yeah, um, so those I need to work on and then, um.
Okay, before you drop, uh, we're gonna let everyone know since we're all here.
Yes.
Um, Amin, Jerry, Alman Wells, uh. Uh, Ismail's going out of town starting next Thursday, this coming Thursday, right?
Uh, yeah, I'm the twenty-second in the morning, my plane leaves.
Okay, yeah, so he'll be overseas, family, um, weddings and whatnot, so, um, he's gonna be. Pretty much unavailable, like he'll be checking Slack if we need anything, but, um, he'll be like full-time on this at all. So we need to just make sure we have everything as stable as we can before he's gone Thursday and, um. But he'll, he'll be available for Slack if anybody has questions, if some, obviously something he worked on, he can direct anybody, but want to give everyone a heads up. Cool, okay. Um, was there anything else on that? I mean.
No. Uh, that was my mistake, uh, yes, so good.
Okay, cool, okay, um. Okay, so Ismail, let's, uh, let's stay working close together today. It is Friday and I, I wanna, um. Do, I want to get everything in a possible done with our custom topic situation here, because there's a lot of, lot of, um. Challenges with it right now. It seems like.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna focus on that, that's my, uh, now that I finished the deep link, I'm gonna move to custom topic problem.
Okay, okay, there, it seems like a few things, so stay, stay connected with me and Chantel talks about iPhone or Android, too. And we'll test, like, I'd like to continue testing a lot as you're making the changes, so we. Don't just, I don't want to just assume things are fixed. Let's, let's do a lot of real world, world testing.
Yeah, sounds like a plan.
Okay, cool. Okay, well then, um, yeah, ping this when you're back online and we'll, we'll go from there.
Sounds good.
Awesome, okay, thanks, Ismail.
Thank you.
Jerry, did you get that link, um, for, for Zane?
You're talking about the invite link?
Yeah.
Yes, it's ready to go, it's the same invite link. You want me to send it to him?
When you say same, I mean, he was gonna use the one from the App Store.
It, oh, the campaign link, the campaign link that we were using for Good Vibes Club, that. That was the link I was saying the same, but i- it's the same one I sent to you, but sure, if you need it again, I'll, I'll, I'll have him up in bio.
Well, hold on, let me double check up, make sure.
Actually, I got some good logic on it.
Okay, good.
So if, if it's that link, I'm going to send you to the App Store, but, um, I have another logical net. If you're not on a phone. It's still gonna go to the landing page. And the reason that is, is that, well, if you're on your computer, you're not on your phone, but you can enter your phone number. And then it'll send you to the App Store after, and then you'll probably.
Can you show me, show me what you're talking about?
Yes, yes. So let me. And, and share this tab. Yeah, okay, so, using my tab? Can you see my screen, John?
Yeah, I just, I see Google.
Yes, so this is, this is where the landing page is, okay? And the reason it did not go to the App Store, actually, this would be better, but let me change it to sharing my screen or the window at least. Um. Okay, so this is because I'm viewing the page on a desktop and it's still gonna have the landing page or the phone number. However, if I go ahead and now I'm on a phone, so my browser is passing that I'm acting as a phone. And I go to that same URL. Boom, oh, of course, it's not, you're not gonna see that. Okay, let's go share the whole screen. Yeah, open app store. So this is, this is when it's just saying it's trying to open the App Store here.
Um. W- what, aren't we going to, isn't the whole point here to be like frictionless, seamless, just go, uh, tap on the link and then go straight to the App Store?
That's what it is. I'm just, you know, I'm just on my computer.
Okay, yeah, I see, the, um, yeah, go ahead.
If you, y'all want to test like that Good Vibes Club link, the one I sent you, that's that I'm using right now.
Yeah, that one opens the app and takes me into the Good Vibes Club chat.
Now, if you're on a phone that doesn't have the app, it'll just shoot you straight to the App Store.
Got it. Um, so the landing page here is like more of an instant redirect or? I think I got a little lost on, you said you're doing something different with this landing page?
Yes, so if you're on a phone, if you're on a phone and you do not have the circles app.
Yeah.
I send you to the App Store. But if you're on a phone, I'm sorry?
Right, instantly, right?
Instantly.
Okay.
And then if you're on a phone and do have the app, you just go to the group in circles. Um, I don't know, I don't have a great way to.
Yeah, I mean, I, I tapped on the link you shared with me and it opens up the app in the chat.
Yeah, can, can you, uh, can you try that on a phone that doesn't have the app installed?
Yeah. Um.
Send it to the test phone, maybe, and.
Yeah, I've got to delete the app, but yes, give me one sec on that. So let's finish this discussion. Why am I seeing the landing page here? This would be in, in what situation?
On if you are on a desktop.
Okay, yeah, so we're gonna assume like pretty much nobody's gonna be on desktop.
Yeah, but that's o- only if the, if the user agent says it's a desktop. We'll see the landing page. Everybody else is gonna go to their respective App Store.
Got it, okay, so they have the link.
Um, I think if I do this, yep, it'll go me, it'll send me to the Play Store. Yeah, so what I could do from here is I can like try to imitate a pixel here. So if I go to that link, you see it just sends me straight to the App Store.
Yeah, okay.
But then if I'm on an iPhone. It wants to open, and, and the reason it's doing this model in particular is because I'm on a Mac. Is because if I hit open App Store, see, it's gonna bring me to the macOS App Store.
Sure, no, no one's gonna be doing that.
Right, that's just, that's just the Mac oddity, but yeah.
Okay, so will you send that link to, uh, Zane?
Sure.
Um, let me tell him you're sending it.
All right, yep.
Yeah, I got, so any any other questions about this? Yeah, maybe once. Okay, um, there's some instructions, so you send him a link.
Yeah, I told him to put it back on Instagram bio.
It's the same one you texted me. A little while back, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna send that to you.
Yeah, I I sent it to him, you can send it to him again, but.
That's my test phone. Okay, so if I delete the app on the test phone. It should take me to App Store, right?
Correct.
I mean, what are you working on right now? We got a lot of stuff going on, I think I. Forgot. To, uh, check on.
Yeah, I was, I was working on the, um. Uh, the screen, the cool kids screen.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I was saying we're gonna move it, uh, before this OT. And also, if you follow anyone from there, will be added to this OT, yeah, that's that's all done, uh, works on it, it's all done.
It's all done, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, s- so.
Um, okay, let me.
Yeah, you can share, yeah, look, you're listed, I mean, sure. And is there any way to remove a little bit of that jank that we we looked at with the transition after? It's kind of minor, but like if it's a quick fix, I'd like to do it, but if it's gonna take an hour, it's not worth it.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't even know where to start from, so it will take me a while to figure out what's going on there. Yes, I was in here, so.
Okay, yeah, that Jerry, Jerry, that the link seemed to work fine when I didn't have the app installed, so, I mean, I did see the landing page for a second, but I guess that's normal. Leave it right here for a second, I mean. Scroll a little bit on this. Yeah, I've never been really satisfied with that bottom part, I I know, um, Ismail was struggling with the forward button. Because I forget why, his simple solution was just like create that blue space, safe space down there. But we don't do that anywhere else, like normally that.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, could could you improve on that while we're doing this?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, and even above, like at the top.
It's gonna be forcing, like we ha- like same as we have in in this OT and other screens, it's gonna be.
Right, right, which I know he attempted that, um, for some reason, it what the. This screen for some reason was not cooperating, I don't know what was different here.
Okay, uh, okay, yeah, I'll look into it and see how.
Okay, and then could you add the gradient line at the top?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, so it doesn't go into the void. Yeah, when you scroll there, you, cool, okay, um. So I see now that it's after.
Yeah, it was.
Wait, was there the screen before this, did it say like follow six people?
No, it was skipped for me. Yeah, and also like those are not mine, I'm using the six six three user key because I don't have any. And if I have, if I don't have any, the screen will be skipped as well, the cool kid. Like, I'm not sure what the, if there's any changes really, I'm not a lot allowing contacts on this. Uh, account or device, so.
Okay, good, so then. It's doing the calculation to.
No, no, it's like it's showing me nothing, shows me nothing, when I'm using my user key, it just skips this screen.
Why?
Cuz there's no cool kids for me to follow.
The test phone number, like it's a.
I mean, the account that I'm using, this account is all, it's the all, the same account that I've been using all the time. Uh, I'm not allowing contacts here in this device, but I shared contacts many times for this account.
Okay, let me make sure I understand, so.
Okay.
Account or this account?
Okay, let me, let me just so I can understand, let me just use my user key. You see, the screen was just skipped, let me call, yeah, it was just skipped, normally.
Right, right, like there should be some people.
Maybe I'm following them all or something like that, I'm not sure what's going on with the logic on the backend. Cuz we don't control that, like, whatever the backend sense, that's like we show it there. Um, let's see. Yeah, it was skip.
Jerry, will you give, first of all, I mean, will you give Jerry this user key, and Jerry, will you say, tell me why there's no cool kids screen suggestions?
Wait, it just looked like he had his cool kids.
No, that was another user key, now that I just use my user key, oh, it has none. I was coding another user key, so I can have data to work with.
Yeah, you can send submit user key.
It's, it's my.
Okay, it's the same one, okay.
Yeah, you want me to send you these, um, the query, the cold kids, or you have it?
Uh, I got it. Okay. While while we're waiting for Jerry to look at that, do you wanna do minor changes, or do you wanna show me more, or?
I I was, I was trying to fix that button.
Okay, cool, let's do that. Amin, what do you have going on now?
Uh, yes, so, so today first I work on like when you updating private event. Uh, image was not updating, like it was showing, uh, uh, past event started. So like that problem will fix it and.
Is that deployed to, um, production yet?
Uh, let me check, uh, we, uh, Jerry, I think you depend now, yes, yeah, you depend on production also.
Okay, I can't remember who discovered that problem, was it Zane? Todd discovered it?
I can since like his message.
Oh, good, okay, can you, uh, ask Todd to test that now in production?
Okay, let me ping this.
Okay. Describe the. The problem, so.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, so Amin fixed the problem with the event thing that you discovered?
Okay, no problem, you're enough.
Second thing, I was, I I'm working on like yesterday, we talked about notification, uh. Up title inside Android, correct, it was not showing.
Right.
Uh, so I found that, I was searching for the approach, what approach we can follow. Since, uh, one signal is not supporting a sub subtitle. So like we need to send inside body subtitle also. But to what is the problem we are facing, we are using one signal to send notification, now both iOS and Android together. And if we include inside body, we don't know how, then in iOS.
Wait, no, I thought we can distinguish between iOS and Android, I thought we can. Make them different.
In that case, Jerry, we need to send, uh, uh, notification differently, iOS differently and Android differently.
I thought we already, I thought we already do that.
No, no, we are not doing that, so we are using one signal, we are sending notification to player ID. At the same time, we are not distinguished between Android and iOS. So I want to know what approach, like the second one approach is inside app side, we, uh, app side, we can do it also. From the backend side, if they, we want to do from the backend side, so we need to do, uh, send notification separately, Android and iOS. Did you go to your point, what I'm talking?
I know what you're saying, but I don't feel good about it.
Yeah, but there's no other.
Cuz it's a major change, right?
I don't want signal supports that.
It does. I thought we were doing it.
I don't think, I I think. That lets us do differently. Is, um. Yeah.
I checked it, I did not find it one signal supporting subtitle inside Android.
It's looking better, I mean. Maybe we don't even need the line, but let's see what it looks like with the line.
So. It looks like you can target iOS and Android specifically, but. That means we're gonna have to support two different types of notifications.
Yeah, 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 that that.
Right? Is that, is that difficult?
It may be major changes that I don't want to.
I mean, we're gonna want that in the long run, right?
It's a decent sized feature to play it out.
All right, let's. Let's leave it how it is then. Um, that means. How many, I guess, I need to know, Amin, how many? Notifications are affected on Android now where? Yeah, a portion is missing, how many?
I will tell you number, give me some time.
Okay, thanks. How's this going here, I mean?
And second, third thing I want to ask you, John's answer in my screen, third thing I want to ask you.
Um, not yet, um.
Um, yeah, so this is with the gradient line.
Yeah. It would be better if there wasn't such a big gap below the arrow, but maybe, I think the bounding box might be. Can you put a box around that lot, E?
I see, okay.
I also, um.
Yeah, that's the best we're gonna do it, okay, so then that line looks silly then, because of how close it is to the. Go ahead and remove the box, let me look at it one more time.
For for Amin's cool kids, John just wanna say that Amin's following all his recommendations.
Interesting, okay. There's so much margin at the top and the bottom of that lot, it's really like.
Um, let me see, let's, um, we can allow it.
Okay, cuz you, it's hitting the safe space at the top. All right, the safe area, and then. The bottom, we have the line right at the bottom, but there's all that padding inside of that bounding box of that lot. I mean, it's not, it's actually not that bad, the more I look at it, the. Less I dislike it. Do you wanna put like a little negative margin at the top, I don't, I know that's not ideal, but.
Yeah, that's how we can push this list a little bit here.
Okay. And then let's look at it on Android.
Just another bug into that.
I saw that, do you have a screen record of it?
Yeah, I uploaded it.
Okay, cool. Yeah, lovely Android issues. I, yeah, I don't get any of these problems on iOS.
Gotta catch them all.
Yeah, no, definitely gotta get them. Um, what was Todd testing again, so testing something for Amin, right?
Yeah, it was just the, um, events.
How'd that go?
It's fixed, we fixed it.
Good, good, okay, the other thing we wanted to test is, um, if you could go to open, um, just any chat conversation. And pull up your keyboard.
Yep.
Is the input field close to your keyboard, or is it sitting high above? Did you say something?
No, sorry, let me see, uh, it looks. It's right where, right above the keyboard, probably.
It seems to be a problem on Chantel's device. So Amin, it sounds like that event calendar thing was fixed, so that's good.
Yep.
Cool. And you had something else you wanted to show me?
Hi, so one, like Ismail given me the reward store, uh. Rocks for notification, I want to ask something here, like we have sent notification. So for this one, I I, we will reward redirect to reward store, our gift to you.
Yeah.
Okay, now next page, this notification circles, you are only ten levels for a free on trip airplane, this one also, uh. We direct to.
Airplane's the, that's an emoji, right?
Uh, yes, yes, this is emoji, no problem, this is my note pad.
Got it.
So this one also direct to same, uh, reward store?
Yes.
Okay.
So. Okay, go keep going, cuz I have a question, but go ahead.
And notification seven, circles love you, maintain your daily streak, this one also, rewards two. One and seven.
I'm thinking. Yeah. Yeah, cuz we're rotating it with one and seven, um, so. Let's. Uh, scroll up to the top one. Let's. Let's remove the subtitle since. It's not gonna work on Android. And. Just have it be. Android and iOS friendly. But don't, don't delete, sorry, don't delete the subtitle, I'm saying, make that line part of the body. So I mean, you can delete the subtitle itself, but like, put that line on the body.
It should be on next line, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so I will send this one, okay, so I need to update the template, I'll do that. And John, I have one more question, last question. And John, I have one more question, last person for the notification. That's it. You are so close to earning your first reward. If we pop socket. Make that three pops up. That's clear. Clear, clear.
Yeah, that one is.
First one.
First one. Got it. Yeah. So what's the, where's the title? Circles rewards is the title.
Uh, our gift to you. This is the title.
Oh, way up there. Wait, notification number one. That was the one.
Notice if circles what it is.
Yeah, you don't have to put title colon. Like you did at the very top.
I will show you. That one I will show you here.
Okay. Yeah, you just, you sound really far away, but.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Okay, so circle. Yeah, I see you now. So. So it's the title circles of wars. Okay. Cool. Um, what does it look like on Android?
So Android also like we need like, like your prayer, we also need to remove subtitle and put in the body.
Yeah. Okay, hold on. Wow, so all this time. God, that's embarrassing. On Android, it said circles rewards on Android and then it said anywhere southwest flies.
Correct. This one.
Okay, it's not totally broken, but it's pretty stupid. I really like the way it lays out on iOS. So we would have to rehaul overhaul the. Notification system to be able to have separate ones for Android and separate for iOS.
Yes.
Well.
Are these, are these all required fields like a title subtitle message? Is it just the messages? The only one required?
Seems message is the only one required with that little red dot there.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's up, Jerry?
Hey, I got a very off topic request, but could I take an hour of to go with Diana to go pick up our marriage license?
Yeah, no problem. We got.
She thought she was gonna be, we're gonna be doing that next week and she'll have an appointment, but we're like, yeah, let's go get it today.
Yeah, so we should be, we should have a cover here. Um, let me just double check. I mean, do you need Jerry for anything at the moment?
I know it applies that was no cool kid because. I'm following all, all of them. So I mean, I don't have any.
When, when is our Instagram post going up?
At. One.
Okay, so we'll have, we'll have you available before that.
But yeah, you'll be back, but. Are you, can you make it for sure within an hour?
Yeah, I mean, the courthouse is in town, so.
Okay. You gotta go, you gotta wait in a line there?
I'll bring my laptop.
Okay, cool.
Just. Yeah.
Okay, cool. All right, then, yeah, try and hurry back though, because. Like to be, yeah, all, all, the whole team on when this goes on.
This just came up last second. I would have, I would have brought it up earlier if it was planned.
Oh, no problem.
All right, all right, I'll be right back, y'all.
Cool.
So John?
Yeah.
You were saying something here. What do we can do currently?
Well, I guess we ought to put the subtitle into the body of the message. Will it line break like this?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's fine. Okay. Let's save that. Yeah, that's good.
Circle's love you. Yeah, there's no subtitle. That is correct.
Okay, how can we test this thing?
Uh, so you cannot test it until the smell give you build. This launch.
Leave it, leave it here for a second. Oh, go back. I just wanna look at the notification. Okay, cool. It looks good. Yes, leave it here in my first one. Yeah, leave it here. So one and these are supposed to rotate, right?
Yes, yes, this is almost.
Do they rotate?
Yes, that is rotating fifty fifty.
Okay. Can I get a click through percentage on both these? Can you tell me which, how many clicks each one got? Yeah, A, B, that's the one down. That's the song. Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah, those, right?
Yeah, it's going from one to seven to one to zero.
It's pretty close.
Almost, almost same.
Almost the same, but one of them was broke. They were both broken. No, one of them was broken. Which one was broken? A?
Uh, since both of the rods are same, so we just updated new one.
Yeah, but the A, A was broken because on Android it was broken because. And it got us still got a slightly higher click degree.
Yes.
Interesting. Okay, well, we get to see how it plays out over more time. Let me see those numbers again. Yeah, go down right there. Stop. Okay, leave it there for a sec. That's the number of clicks, right? Twelve seventy?
Yeah, this is the number of materials sent. Uh, this is the number of click forty one. Forty one is a click. Yeah, forty one is a click.
A super low. It's like one of the lowest ones. The new friend is high seventeen percent. Which is great. Glad to see that.
Um, recommended your business is also.
That's really good too. I like that. Okay, um, do you have any more questions on here, I mean? Okay. Okay. All right, I wanna, I think we can let you go then. I wanna go back with the mean here. Have a good night. Thanks, Amit. I mean, so, um. It looks like you closed the gap a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Do you think it's gonna look all right on Android?
I mean, yeah, um, I have an inquiry here. Yeah, we didn't do anything crazy here. And yeah, I wanted to showcase, uh, when like for example, you know, follow from here, someone from here. And if you go to this OT, how they are added.
Yeah. Great, nice. Okay.
Should we see?
Okay, that's okay. Yeah, no, you go, keep.
I can, I, I can, I'm having things, um, it's gonna bring me back to that screen again.